Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting at the Round Lake Area Board of Education at 7:00 PM on September the 8th, 2025 in the John T. McGee Cafeteria. If I can get started first with a roll call, please.
Mrs. Klinger?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mrs. Negrete McGinley?
Here.
Mr. De Vera?
Here.
And first up is Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the meeting as listed?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Lee, seconded by Mrs. Larson. Roll call, please.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have an approved agenda. And first up on that agenda is Communications to the Board and the Enrollment Projection Study Presentation by Dr. Abkar.
Thank you to Dr. Mendoza and the Board for allowing me to come share the results of the Enrollment Projection Study. As I start this presentation, I want to note a couple of things. Each time I refer to two sets of numbers, I'm referring to the three-year and five-year projection model. The five-year projection model is the most accurate as it accounts for variability in the data. Also, when I refer to current data, the data that's included in this presentation is for the 24-25 school year. I do have FY '26 data, but just so you know, when I say current data, it's FY '24-25. And then anytime you see 5K, 5K means kindergarten. It's just in Wisconsin. In Wisconsin, kindergarten is 5K.
And the study was completed by the University of Wisconsin. And you've also included the full, full study is for backup information for the Board, correct?
Yes, I included a full executive summary and then the full study in the packet. So as I begin the presentation, I wanted to share a couple of data points that stood out to me as I reviewed the final report. The first of that being, over the last 10 years, the district has decreased by 1,070 students. Let me take a step back. So again, the five-year trend model is the most accurate model. And we are expected to decrease by 1,070 students over the next five years. So on this slide, I also shared sort of a history of where we've been with our enrollment. So last school year, we had 6,322 students. This year, we were projected to have 6,288 students. We actually have 6,188 students. So 10 years ago, as this study tracks, we had 7,180 students. And the projection is that in the next five years, we will drop to 5,252 students. So the greatest decline in enrollment is expected at the elementary level. And we will expect an enrollment of 2,351 students for this school year and dropping to 2,000, not 29 students for the 2930 school year. So Indian Hill is projected to decrease the most by 6.3%. And Village is expected to decline the least by 0.51%. So we're starting to see a decline at the high school for the first time. We're expecting a decline of 10% over the next five years. And finally, it is projected that birth rates will decline by 15 births per year over the next five years. The biggest indicator of enrollment trends for a unit district is whether or not the incoming kindergarten class can replace the outgoing 12th grade class. And nine of the last 10 years, we have not done that in the district, as you can see by the graph that's on the screen. So on this, this graph, the black line indicates the actual enrollment over the last 10 years. The blue line represents the recent trend, which is a five-year trend. And then the long-term trend is our enrollment trend over the last 10 years. And you can see in all models, our enrollment has declined and is expected to decline. If we look at our grade structure, you can see that our current kindergarten class is 400 students. And our current senior class is 605 students. So you can see that sharp line where there's a significant discrepancy between our kindergarten class and our outgoing 12th grade class. Now, I also wanted to share with you what that looked like the last time we did this study. And there is a sharper decline in our recent grade structure. So currently, our average kindergarten class is 400. Our average elementary class is 409 students, with fourth grade being the largest. Middle school is 643 students, with eighth grade being the largest. And then the high school is 535 students, with 12th grade being the largest. So the next graph represents our overall enrollment. The black trend line includes preschool. The blue trend line does not. But over the past 10 years, district enrollment has declined by 12% from 7,180 students for the 15-16 school year to 6,322 students for the 24-25 school year. As I previously shared, the five-year trend model is the most accurate model. And the district is projected to decrease over the next five years from 6,322 students to 5,252 students for the 2930 school year. This represents 17%, again, five-year model. So overall enrollment trends, our overall district enrollment is expected to range from 5,252 students to 5,768 students. So the 5,252 is the five-year model. The 5,768 is the three-year model. And that represents anywhere from an 8.8% to a 17% decrease. So the majority of the decline will be seen at the elementary level. The current elementary enrollment is 2,455 students. So kindergarten through fifth grade is projected to decrease anywhere from 2,029 students to 2,333 students. This represents a decline anywhere from 5 to 17%. And again, Indian Hill is projected to reduce the most by 6.3%. And Village is projected to decline the least. And again, the average class sizes currently are 535 for high school, 463 for middle school, 409 for elementary, and 400 for kindergarten. So this graph shows the enrollment by grade grouping. With the exception of preschool, given that over the last 10 years, we've added additional preschool for all and the preschool for all expansion adding full-day preschool. Those number of seats in the district have increased. That's why you see an increase. But every other grade level, we have declined. Now, in the previous graph, it didn't specifically outline kindergarten, but I wanted to show this graph again just to show the decline in kindergarten enrollment. So if we look at elementary enrollment overall, the preschool has increased by 7% over the last 10 years. Again, this is due to expansion of our preschool programming, including our recent addition. So preschool has gained 147 students, when kindergarten has lost 98 students. So first through fifth grades have declined by 24% over the past 10 years. Most of that decline happened between the FY '18 school year and the FY '22 school year. So the average elementary class size is 409 students, with fourth grade being the largest. So secondary enrollment is currently 1,390 students. Enrollment is projected to decline slightly, anywhere from 1,146 students to 1,235 students through the next five years. This represents anywhere from a 4% to 6% decrease. So sixth through eighth grade has declined 15% over the past 10 years, with again, that largest decline being FY '18 through FY '22. And after the next five years, that decline in middle school enrollment will be more significant as smaller cohorts matriculate through. So John T. McGee Middle School is expected to decline by 11% over the next five years. And the average class size for middle school is 643 students, with eighth grade being the largest. So as, as of the time of the writing of this presentation, the high school enrollment was 2,141 students. It's currently 2,008 students. So enrollment is projected to decline anywhere from 1,798 students to 1,932 students. This is a 10% to 16% decline. So we have not seen a decrease in enrollment at the high school until now. This is a new trend, a new finding. And over the past 10 years, overall high school has declined by 0.6%, which is negligible. And then the average class size for ninth through 12th grade is 535 students, with 12th grade being the largest. As we look at birth trends, we've seen a decline in births since the mid-2000s, since 2006. And given this trend, it is projected that birth rates will decline by 15 births per year through 2030. So this next slide shows the age structure in the district. It shows the totals as of the 2010 census and the 2020 census. As you can see, ages 0 through 14 have declined over that period of time. Students ages 15 through 24 have increased by 5%. And then ages 25 through 44, which predominantly childbearing years, has decreased by 16%. While ages 45 through 64 have increased, as well as ages 65-plus, which represents a 61% increase. So this slide just outlines what I just shared with you, but again, middle-aged adults have increased by 61%. And older adults, 65-plus, have increased by 61%. While the young adults have declined by 16%. So I wanted to share considerations because decreased enrollment will allow special education programming to be more equally split amongst the district. This is especially true for elementary, where special education programming is focused on Murphy and Ellis. So this will allow students with special needs to be educated in their home schools. This decline in enrollment will also have staffing implications. This will especially be true at the elementary level, where we will see a 14% drop in enrollment. So every year, we look at transportation and the impact that moving students across the district has on transportation. So declining enrollment may result in less displacement. Multilingual students are currently more likely to be displaced than monolingual students. And then reduced student displacement, whether it's for language needs or special education needs, will result in less students being transported outside their school boundary, which will take stress off of the transportation department.
And that would be better for families, too.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So declining enrollment may also result in reductions in the number of students who receive special education or multilingual services. These reductions in these student populations will have implications for space. Again, freeing up space to educate students in their home schools. Also have an impact on staffing, requiring less services, given we have less students who would qualify for special education or multilingual services. And then it would also have funding implications. So based on the current funding model, a reduction of 1,070 students could have funding implications moving forward.
I just have a couple of comments for the Board. This, the first time I can remember, the high school trending almost under 2,000. Our last enrollment projections, even though they did show a decline at the high school, we've never usually seen that, which basically supports the idea that we have families moving in at the high school level. So it's the first time I can remember even being close to the 2,000 number. The other thing, just a gentle reminder to the Board, is EBF is directly tied. It's not average daily attendance, but it is enrollment-based. They do use a three-year rolling average to account for sudden swift increases or decreases in population. So generally speaking, the funding will accord with our student enrollment. So the more students we have, the more money we get, the fewer students we have, the less money we get. So that's, that's all I wanted to remind the Board, and you can certainly ask questions.
One more point of note. The 2021 Enrollment Projection Study projected that we would have a total enrollment of 5,801 students this school year. And we're currently, as of FY '26, at 6,188.
Isn't, so the EBF funding is based on, basically like a curve, right? It's like one big pie that's split up.
So the pie, that's correct. It's, it's a finite amount of money that's split up mostly. 98% of it goes to tier-one school districts.
Now, are you aware if, my assumption is birth rates are down, I think, 10 to 15% in the, in the country? Not just, and I think about that in the US, in Illinois specifically. So it may not actually, it may just be apples-apples kind of thing.
Correct.
I had another thought, and it may be, so when we start thinking about things like the classrooms, one is classroom size, and then it's also classroom configuration, right? And where the classrooms are. And is there ever a time or a point or like a threshold where like the mobiles won't be needed?
So that, so depending on how you look at it, there are some positive outcomes to enrollment decline. I would say it's a little more challenging on how to deal with declining enrollment than increase. But naturally speaking, it does, it would free up more classroom space in each building. The one thing I want to caution the Board on is if you think about it this way, we've gone down roughly 1,000 students in 10 years. So on average, just, let's just use averages, that's 100 students a school, because we have 10 schools. That's not that fast. Because if you take 100 at an elementary school and divide that up by three grade levels, and then across seven sections at a grade level, we're not declining swiftly. It's a little bit slower. So I would not expect in the short term to have all of these open classrooms. It would allow us to hopefully eventually not have to utilize mobile units, which is positive. And we'd like all of our kids to be in the schools.
Well, we wouldn't want to do that. So for instance, we can have X amount of students, but we wouldn't want to do it at a sacrifice of the programs. So quantity of programs could also necessitate the need for additional space.
Yeah, that's, that would be fair to say. It's just, you, we want to maintain programming, but instead of, I'm just using an example. Instead of two sponsors with 30 kids, maybe you have one sponsor with 15, because your population's gone down. We're still offering the thing. At the high school level, I'm just thinking out loud again, depending on enrollment, but from what I remember, we have two or three JV soccer teams, I believe, because we have such high student population. Again, not looking to cut programs, but the amount, we're not going to have a team with eight kids on it just to maintain the same number of sponsors. So there's guidelines that govern how we do that, just like with class size guidelines, we have the same.
I was just wondering if there's a possibility of a facility rightsizing. So for instance, I have four children. One goes away to college or moves out. I'm like, hey, my house just got rightsized, right? Because I'm like, I have more space. So it's probably not. It's much more complicated in a school with...
No, but I, I do think it will ease the pressure of like, not, our class sizes are good. It's just we run out of spaces to do things. And so that will actually be better. That could be better.
Question in regards to preschool. We are, we've been blessed to be able to expand our preschool seats. And we have that 7% over the last 10 years with 147 growth. But our kindergarten is still losing. So can you give me an idea? Is there a reason if we're, if we're growing more preschool because we've opened up more seats, but we're still net losing kindergarten?
Yeah, so we were able to add seats and to add classrooms to the preschool program. But that's over your three, four, and five-year-olds. So it's not necessarily distributed amongst one grade level. So as those students move up, you're going to see that same decline as, that you currently see in kindergarten.
Thank you. Good clarification there. Thank you.
I have a question as well. So with the projected decline for Village at, or Indian Hill, excuse me, at 6.3, I'm assuming our school boundaries were provided to them with?
They were, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. I assumed, but I just wanted to clarify.
They absolutely were. I wanted to make sure that they focused on partner schools and had the grade levels and had which students would attend which partner school as we went into this.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, but thank you.
Absolutely.
And so just one closing comment. Alls this is, is just good information to have. We can look every year with our registration enrollment projections. And this is kind of a barometer. Are we trending consistent with what the report says we should? It helps us see around the corner, I guess, a little bit better. So I think, I want to thank the Board for every, I think we've done this every five years, so.
Any additional questions from the Board?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda was review contracts under 1,000. We did not have anything there, so we'll move on, which will bring us to opportunity for public comment. As always, members of the public may participate in public comment during regular board meetings by attending in person or by submitting an electronic public comment form. Please note that speakers are limited to three minutes. And electronic public comments are accepted up until noon on the day of the regularly scheduled meeting. Public commenter is contacted to confirm identity. And once confirmed, the electronic public comment will be provided to all board members in written form. A link to the electronic public comment form is online. We did not have any electronic public comment prior to this meeting, and we will now turn it over to public comment.
Tricia Snyder?
Good evening. My name is Tricia Snyder. I have a student over at Murphy. I'm wondering if the Board can tell me the status of the construction? There's still a big giant hole in the wall from the elevator. It's not nice. It's super concerning. I'm wondering if anybody knows anything.
We can talk after the meeting. I can provide some additional information, but I'm actually glad you're making this comment, which reminds us that we need to put a communication out to our families for an update. So thank you.
Communication would be great. If I may ask a question in regards to the study that was just presented to the Board, can you? Sure. Could I clarify that study is done every five years, or you've done that for the past five years?
So we've, no, so we haven't done it every five. And again, I'm... And again, I'm going outside of how we normally run these meetings. It's totally, it's totally fine, it's very simple. We've done it every five years. The longer we go out, the less reliable the data gets. So if we waited seven years or eight, it wouldn't be as reliable. So we generally try to do it every five. So we won't do another one for five years.
Do you think it would be beneficial to do it in smaller increments?
It wouldn't, not based on my experience, my history with enrollment studies. There's a lot of science and mathematical equationing that goes into the building of it, and we give the demographer like a lot of data, so it's pretty reliable.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Very welcome.
And we have no additional public comment, which will now take us to superintendent's report and our report from Dr. Mendoza.
Did we have students, did we have any students or somebody here that wanted to do public comment?
All right, apologize for that, thank you. We always want to have public comment. So next up then is the superintendent's report and Dr. Mendoza.
So we're pleased to share that Round Lake has been recognized in the September edition of the statewide kids' new letter, newsletter, highlighted in the district spotlight section. This recognition celebrates the collaborative efforts of our staff over the past year and continuing into the school year to advance developmentally appropriate practice and play-based instruction in kindergarten. The feature also emphasized the purposeful engagement, engaging learning environment created to support our youngest students. This acknowledgement reflects the dedication of our teachers and leaders to provide high-quality, student-centered, early learning experiences. The newsletter can be viewed at this link. This fall, Round Lake High School launched a new app and website for the athletic department. You may download the app on your device through the App Store, Apple, or Google. The website is available here, so it's an active link in your packets, community, and board. And last, below our list of recent donations per board policy, all donations are communicated to the Board of Education. A thank you letter will be sent to each donor. Vary supplies and keychains from an anonymous donor were donated to Beach, and backpacks, crayons from Philly Heart for Kids were also donated to Beach. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza. Any questions for Dr. Mendoza on the superintendent's report? Hearing none, we will move to committee reports and the community engagement committee update. Ms. Klinger?
Hello, we had an opportunity to meet tonight. The main item of note that was on the agenda was the stakeholder advisory group. This is something that we did last year and we found incredibly valuable, so we're going to be doing it again with all of the schools. It's going to be a district-wide, all participants that were, all participants that were involved last year asked to be involved this year again, so. But they had provided feedback saying that they wanted, because last year we met three times, that they wanted to have a little bit more space between the meetings. So we're going to be doing it two times this year. So it'll be fall, October 27th, and then spring will be April 13th. And we're going to be combining the parent advisory committee with stakeholder advisory group and the community outreach and engagement specialist, so the two sessions. We are going to be extending the invitation again to all of the people, like I said, that we did last time, but we're going to be increasing the participation from three to five minimum families per building. So we'll have community members, family members, students, or, excuse me, not students, I apologize, but every group of stakeholders will be like included in this particular group. And then in the agenda, you can see some of the questions that we'll be focusing on. We're really excited about it, feel like it'll be a great way to connect up with the community. So if you get a chance, you can like look over those. There's a variety of things that we touched on last year, and some of them we'll be touching on again. This year, they're going to be, there's several areas that they're focusing on. One of them is technology and how to, you know, keep kids safe, and that's been a hot button issue. So if you get a chance in the packet to take a peek at it, that was the main thing that we discussed. And if you get the chance, look at our analytics on our website, but that's, that was it.
Was that the one thing that we did when we were in, that was so cool?
Any additional questions for the update? Hearing none, thank you very much. And that will take us to approval of open meeting minutes.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of August 19th, 2025 special board meeting. Motion, hearing.
Sum of.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lee, second by Mrs. Klinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jewitt?
I'm staying.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the August 25th, 2025 regular board meeting minutes.
Sum of.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second by Mrs. Klinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion for the consent agenda for the following items. The accounts payable report for $1,552,959.88. The September 8th, 2025 employment report.
Sum of.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second by Mrs. Klinger. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yeah.
Motion carries. And that will take us to old business and the revised fiscal '26 tentative budget for display. Ms. Amso.
Tonight, we will be going through our revised FY '26 tentative budget for display. There is no action that's required by the board at this time. So the law, as it relates to putting your budget on display and then adopting your budget, simply states that we have to put a budget on display within 30 days of the adoption. That does not mean that the budget cannot change in between. And so what we're working on tonight is the reiteration of our budget with option three reflected inside our budget, as well as after the September 15th payroll is run, we will be using the September 15th payroll data to help shore up these figures even further. So just realize that this is a living, breathing document, and when we bring it to you by the September 30th board meeting for adoption, we hope to have even more refined figures within that budget document. But if we take a look at our FY '26 draft budget, overall, we saw our revenues decrease by $247,000 from the iteration that you received a few weeks ago till now. Why did that happen? Well, let me explain. The way our grant budgets work is that whatever we budget for expenditures is what we budget for revenues up above. Many of our grants include salaries and benefits. So when you reduce your salaries and benefits because people decided to take a lesser of a pay increase, that also reduces the corresponding revenue up above. So that's why we're seeing the small decrease in revenue. Realize that if that money is due and owed to us, say that the grant still has an extra $25,000 that is due to us, then what we would end up doing is a budget transfer to increase the expenditure and then increase the revenue. The important thing to note is that grants have a zero impact on the overall budget deficit or budget surplus, because whatever you spend is what you receive. So that is the major reason why we have the revenue decrease. We do have a few reclassifications that were made inside some revenue lines, but the majority of the revenue decrease is directly related to the reduction of our expenditures. If we take a look at the next slide, our expenditures decreased by $1.86 million. The majority of this is due to the Earl Association agreeing to take a reduced salary increase of 2.5% from the 5.5% that was originally budgeted. It's important to note that in FY '27 and beyond, the board has, and the district has formally committed to repaying these dollars to our Earl members with surpluses. But right now, we do not have surpluses. The good news is that from the iteration that you received last board meeting to this board meeting, we went from about a $5.4 million operating deficit to about a $2.9 million operating deficit, which is good but bad news. It's still good news, though. It's a better impact than where we were previously. What we've also incorporated into this budget iteration is the elimination of specific vacant positions. We've paused non-grant-funded professional development. We have limitations now on overtime expenditures. We did a 10% reduction of discretionary supply funds across departments and schools, and we reduced the increases for administrator salaries in FY '26. As we take a look at our operating funds in whole, we're looking at our overall our overall revenues, there, it works. So if we take a look at our overall revenues, you will see one change to the budget between operating funds and our non-operating funds was the movement of our corporate property taxes. Previously, we had about $53,000 of corporate property taxes that were applied in FY '25, and about $345,000 that was applied to the FY '26 budget. These have been reallocated into the site and construction fund due to some overages that we had from original estimates that went to the board for projects, and then the bid results coming in a little bit higher than anticipated. Those have been noted in the site and construction section of our budget. If we take a look at our operating fund expenditures, again, some of the major changes you'll see is before we had 5.5% increases pretty much in the majority of these lines down here. Now we are looking at a 0% increase for administrator salaries, and that's from FY '25 to FY '26 budgeted. We have about a 1% increase in certified staff salaries. If I were you, I'd be asking, well, they were given a 2.5% pay increase, why do we only have 1%? Well, that is because we have opted not to fill open positions and some positions, so that is going to create a smaller variance from the prior year. Our non-certified staff salaries are right in line with where we would anticipate them to be, about 2.5%. And if we take a look at our stipends and our subs, this changed significantly. Previously, under the option one scenario that we had presented with the budget, we had over $800,000 that was being reduced in this section because we were looking at reducing programming, not programming, but our athletics and some of our clubs and sports. But with the passing of option three, we didn't have to do that. And so now we see a smaller decrease, a much smaller decrease in this area. And that is where we are not filling clubs that we would otherwise not be running. As we take a look at our debt service funds, we haven't seen much of a change in this line item. We're still looking at about $6.6 million budget for our levy revenue. You will notice that we have zero budgeted in this state line here. And that state line, this was actually that property tax relief grant that we received for two years. So it's showing up in FY '24, it's showing up in FY '25, but we did not receive that for FY '26, which is why we see zero budgeted in FY '26. If we take a look at our expenditures, our expenditures are anticipated to be about $8.1 million. That is an increase from the prior year, but this is not something that we have control over. This is set by our bond payment schedule. So when we actually take out the bonds, there's kind of like a mortgage payment schedule that's created for the district, and we are to abide by that payment schedule, and this reflects that payment schedule. That schedule is also sent to the county, and that's how they decide how much to levy from year to year for our bonds. The only difference would be is if we have a situation where we abate bonds or we decide to pay those bonds on behalf of the taxpayers, like we did in the previous slide, the two years, oops, let me get this back. The two years where you see the evidence or the property tax relief grant here, you will see CR levy, our levy was significantly less in those years. So that's what happens, is that you actually levy less when you have a different alternative source of revenue for those bonds. As we take a look at our capital and life safety project funds, you will see there's those, that corporate property taxes, they have been applied into FY '26 to help us with some overages that we're anticipating. We also see that in prior years, we had a large $1.8 million donation in FY '25 that came from a corporation. We do not have that budgeted for FY '26, unfortunately. So that's why you see such large percentage variances and dollar variances from year to year in that area. Additionally, we had some state grants that allowed us to do some significant capital improvements. Those state grants have sunset, and so now we have one state grant that is remaining, and that is our $50,000 grant where we actually, we're required to pay the exact same amount. So we have to pay at least $50,000, and they pay $50,000 for whatever project we deem necessary. If we take a look at our expenditures, the one area that did change is we did increase this capital outlay and equipment, and again, this is noted in footnote 35 in your document. But we increased that based on our new projections for what we anticipate the outstanding capital projects to cost. This will be, these will be projects that are completed over FY '26 and FY '27. However, you never know exactly how much they're going to be able to get done in that summer timeframe. So we tend to budget as, budget what, more than what we think we're going to spend in the year, so that we don't run into a situation where we have not budgeted enough and we are required to file an amended budget. So if we were to spend, say, $5 million this year, that additional $1 million that's budgeted here would be rolled into FY '27's budget to be spent. So when we're looking at all of our funds in total, again, we're happy to say that this number right here, the revenues less expenditures, has gone down from $5.4 million to $2.9 million. Our debt service is expected to have a deficit, but this is in line with what generally happens with your debt service payments. You actually pay them in different timeframes than you receive the money, which is one of the reasons the state does not include debt service when they decide whether or not you have a balanced budget. The other two funds that they don't include when they decide whether or not you have a balanced budget are the capital projects funds, because again, much like the debt service, you're going to receive a lump sum bond payment or a lump sum that you then spend over multiple years to complete your projects. So those are not required to be quote-unquote "in balance." The important thing is that at the end of the day, especially for these three funds, that you don't have a negative fund balance in those funds, that is a situation where you generally should not be. That means something is budgeted incorrectly, or your revenue is incorrectly, has incorrect assumption. Do we have any questions?
Got a small question, could you remind me what purchase services are?
So that is anything that we go outside of the district for. We're buying a service from a company, so that could be if we have professional development come in and teach our people.
Just want to again acknowledge the work of our association. This budget looks significantly better than the one we saw last time. And again, the collaboration was exceptional, and I think with our new reporting systems and structure and safeguards, I feel very good about the monitoring and management of that moving forward. So again, just want to thank the association publicly.
Hearing no additional questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is listed for action, though. Heather?
T, you can go back.
It's listed for action, though, right? Even though I think Ms. Amso said no action is necessary.
Formal action will be at this, at the September, the second, yes.
Yeah, formal action, if the board wanted to, you could vote tonight to basically replace the budget that's on display if we wanted to, but there is no formal action that is required. We will be putting this budget along with the We will be putting this budget along with the other budget. We'll keep the other budget online so that people can see and so that there is complete transparency in between the first iteration of the budget and this iteration of the budget.
Yeah, just the agenda says type action and not information, also I just want to clarify.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. Yeah, just want to make sure that everyone's aware.
And that will take us to new business. And first up on that is Ms. Kurtz, the school improvement plans.
Good evening. Tonight, I am respectfully requesting the board review and approve the twenty five, twenty six school improvement plans. In collaboration with the school improvement leadership teams, our building administration have prepared year two of their three-year continuous improvement plans. The Board of Education's approval is needed to access our ill empower grant funding for schools designated as targeted or comprehensive. Once board approval is secured, the school improvement plans can be uploaded. And our tentatively approved grant will be fully approved. Thank you for consideration. At this point, I invite any questions you may have.
Just reminding the board, this is a normal annual cycle. I just want to thank you and the teams. These are probably the best school improvement plan structure wise I've seen. So a lot of detail and very clear what the work is. So I just want to thank you and the team.
Hearing no questions from the board.
Right, I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school improvement plans as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, second to my Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinnley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry, I know this is out of order. But I've got a question. So in the plans like this, how can somebody like myself that is a layman, how somebody like myself that's a layman? Because Dr. Mendoza said, these are, these are awesome plans. When I look at them, I feel like I'm looking at a really large spreadsheet, right? With a whole lot of things and I'm like, should I copy this and put it in ChatGPT and say, explain it to me like I'm a fifth grader? What are some things that I should be looking for that tell me that this is a great plan?
Sure, so first structurally, last year was the first year of implementation. We restructured the school improvement model in our district. Prior to last year, we had one year school improvement plans, which means each building had the ability to change their goals year over year. Not a lot, which was beneficial in some ways, but also detrimental. It's detrimental because we didn't have the longevity to really see through goals and modify them based on real time data. The new system allows for regular data review. Buildings, building administration, along with the school improvement leadership teams, conduct quarterly evaluation of their data. So they assess their goals regularly to make sure that progress is occurring. And if that progress isn't occurring, they are adjusting their plans and their action steps to show improvement or to make improvement in headway. The longevity of the plan allows for that to happen. In addition to that, the school improvement template is the same. So all buildings, regardless of where you are, are the exact same models. It allows for goals to be shared between our principals and conversations to be happen between buildings about what's working in some buildings that might not be working in others. So it gives a template or grounds for a professional learning community of sort to happen between buildings on what's able to make progress between the buildings. In addition to that, how you could observe as a reader or digester of this information is by looking at the overall smart goal. That is the target for the end of three years of where the building is hoping to be based on data. So we set a target and then those three years, we work towards that end of the three year target. So you can look to see underneath the worthy target of how each year is broken down to hit that overall three year goal. And the action steps under each goal tell you how they're going to get there. So that would be the Reader's Digest version of which ways you could assess it or, you know, for yourself if that is truly a good plan or not.
Then is that, is that something that you're going to have, this is what we thought we were going to go towards, right? Because sometimes you think this is going to get you to point B, but maybe it isn't, right? For one reason or another. Do you have where you said, I thought we were going to do that? In other words, you see past performance to see that, so that we know you're changing direction, but it doesn't necessarily show.
I do. So you can see how buildings modify their targets. So you'll see their end of year, you can look back for year one, it's all on the same document, each goal. So you can see where they actually ended up for year one. And then under year two, you'll see if they modified the target and that means adjusted the course. Also underneath the action steps, you'll be able to see, are they maintaining action steps from the year before because they were successful? Or did they shift some of those targets or action steps to try new things based on their data and where they'd like to see the data head towards?
Perfect, thank you for obliging me, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Dampf with the Solution Tree Embedded Coaching for Secondary Schools.
Good evening. I am here to request that the board review and approve embedded coaching for our secondary schools, which, as you know, for the last year have been on a PLC, professional learning community reset. And part of that involves having expert trainers from Solution Tree come on site to our schools and work with our department chairs and our building administrators. Now, we did this last year and they all reported that this was incredibly helpful to them as someone who's been through the process and could give them insight on how to actually enact change in their building. So this is a secondary initiative, it's been the focus for the last year. We do anticipate potentially being able to roll this out, something like this at elementary down the road. But elementary has been focused on curriculum, so that question came up and I just wanted to address that as well. So this is for three total days, one for each of the secondary schools.
Thank you. So as Ms. Dampf mentioned, this was reviewed at finance, that was the question that she alluded to. Because it only focuses on secondary, we wanted to know about elementary and as you heard her mention, they're focusing on curriculum.
And it's grant funded, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Any additional questions from the board? I'm looking at you, Mr. Jewett. I want to take that as no additional questions from the board.
All right, need a motion to review and approve the contracts for embedded coaching for Solution Tree in the amount of twenty one thousand three hundred budgeted out of the fiscal twenty twenty six teacher vacancy grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, second to my Mr. Jewett. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And that will bring us to positive occurrences.
I was very delighted that we won our game, our football game. Actually, I believe both the varsity and the JV won, if I'm not mistaken. But it was such a good game and they totally like collaborated them. It was so good, it was so, I'm sorry, I know, I'm sorry for the other kids, they did so good. And I was excited, okay.
I will throw out there definitely a thank you to the high school staff and administration. AYSO was able to host its first high school girls' year nineteen soccer match, which they come in from, and they play in the Blackmore League, which that Blackmore League is Crystal Lake, Palatine, Schaumburg, Woodstock, and a couple others. But the, we were able to use the high school stadium and the full soccer pitch on the field. And Crystal Lake couldn't stop beaming about the facilities. Had the water on the field where they were able to have water right there on their sideline, the whole nine yards. So excellent, excellent job. Thank you very much to the administration and the staff working at the stadium, as always, looked amazing. And that was on a Sunday afternoon after having had the high school football games on Friday. Turned around and had flag football for most of the day on Saturday. And it was ready to go on Sunday for us, so thank you very much. Any additional positive occurrences around the board?
I'll second the football game, the energy in the stands and on the field was actually electric. It was, it was really heartwarming to see them win after a few years. I loved watching the marching band get to, get to perform. I didn't see them the week before. And I, I really liked the addition of the staff appreciation. I thought that was really, that was really great.
I want to commend the teaching and learning team, Dr. Stefan, Ms. Kurtz. I mean, you just saw Ms. Kurtz talk about the school improvement plan. We found out today, I mean, I did, that our parent advisory process is actually being used by the state as a model and exemplar for other communities and other school districts. And it sounds like we're even beefing it up. So I'm, I just want to thank the team for being proactive and engaging the community in that way, so.
And I'll also just throw out there, it's a little ahead, but another huge positive occurrence is coming up on Friday when Dr. Sanders comes to the, comes to the locations here. And we'll have a chance to walk around, do some invitations and show off the district and the work that especially the staff, administration, teachers, students across the board. Just that, that's going to be an exciting ability.
If we're doing upcoming ones, then there is a competition for the band, actually, on the marching band on Sunday at Grace Lake North. So if you guys want to, it's, yeah, it's close and it's a beautiful facility. But also the kids have been working really hard on the show and the show is cool, so if you get a chance.
All right, hearing nothing else on that, we will move on to future agenda items. Anyone have anything they'd like to present?
Uh, yes, please. I was looking for an update on a transportation update for the students affected by the implementation of my rate K through twelve. And you know, the details to, do the kids who didn't have busing now have busing? When if all will, if they don't, will it resume? What are we doing to prevent this from happening again? What are we doing to make sure, making sure that parent calls and emails are being answered at the transportation office? I know there's been a lot of communication from the, the community that, that their calls are going unanswered. What communication, if any, did we provide to the families that were affected? And has the distance required for busing changed from one point five to one point three miles? That, I believe that's why they were eliminated. And if, is that permanent or is it going to change? Because I know, I, I know some students who still don't have busing and we're four weeks in.
So anybody that doesn't have busing that should, should call Ms. Bennett. We will take care of that, we'll have the update at the next board meeting for you.
Additional items.
Oh, sorry, just to remind me, Dr. Mendoza, because I brought forward regarding the new cut scores, when will that come to the board?
So Ms. Kurtz is in the back when we do our student achievement presentation. So the, the IAR results are embargoed right now, so we can't release them, our, our state assessment scores. We will actually bring the information back with the cut scores in concert with our student outcome presentation. That should be October, okay, early November.
Any last agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move to approval of closed session minutes.
Need a motion to approve the closed session minutes of July thirty first, twenty twenty five special board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, second to my Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Stay.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes of August fourth, twenty twenty five regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lee, second to my Mr. Jewett. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Negretti McGinnley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes. Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes of August eighteenth, twenty twenty five special board meeting.
So.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Klinger, second to my Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinnley?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us to, I need a motion to convene a closed session as permitted by statute five ILCS one twenty slash two for the purposes of discussing the followings. Employment matters, five ILCS one twenty slash two C one. Closed meeting minutes, five ILCS one twenty slash two C twenty one. And real estate matters, five ILCS one twenty slash two C five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second to my Mrs. Larson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Negret, Mrs. Negretti McGinnley?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries, that will take us into closed session and that will adjourn us for open session for the rest of this evening. We thank you all for attending in person as well as online. And we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting on September twenty ninth, if I am not mistaken. So thank you very much and have a great evening.